Members, it is the schedule time and we have a quorum. After the short break, we will now resume with the second round of questions. Mister Michael Look, please. Thank you. Following up on paragraph two point six. That's the source of ghost absence I refer to. Some forty-three thousand shifts. And these several technical positions, there is a lack of explanation. Do the FEHD and the Audit Commission know how the attendance records are signed? Are the frontline outsourced staff themselves signed the name, say Mister Mi- say Michael Look, and then endorsed by the supervisor or the foreman? Director? Chairman? On the attendance record, the contractor has to submit a list of attendance every day. Any absence would have to be crossed out on the list. The attendance form itself has to be signed by the contractors them- themselves for verification by senior foreman. What about the worker themselves? They have to sign the names as well. May I invite the assistance director to supplement? Mister Peter Poon, thank you Chairman. To elaborate about signing attendance, there is a ten- there is an attendance record kept by the contractors themselves. The daily attendance records submitted to us is just a list of names of workers handling a certain shifts. Now for the attendance records themselves, the names are signed on the record book kept by the contractors themselves. Mister Michael Look, so did you check the actual attendance book, or did you just check the attendance list or the daily attendance records? I gather that they are just checking the attendance records submitted to them. Is that the case? Mister Peter Poon, may I confirm with you if that's the case? We did not check the actual attendance book, but rather the daily attendance records. We had an idea who was responsible for which position, and then we would send a colleague to check whether the attendance is true. Mister Michael Look? When you conducted the checks or the inspections, would you notify the supervisor in advance or were they surprise checks? Mister Poon? The inspections are risk-based. For locations with poor records, for example, records of slacking by workers or more secret spots on the floor or overfilling rubbish bins, we would conduct more checks. So within the scope of work, for each senior foreman, they would have to cover the entire area within ten, ten working days. What does that mean? Now, the senior foreman would break down the area assigned to him or her into ten blocks and complete the inspection within ten days. Now let's say a beat is assigned to a contractor. So would you go to that street, that particular session to check the worker responsible for the beat? Or would you ask the supervisor to call the worker to see you? Mister Poon? The senior foreman is responsible for monitoring the service performance, that is whether this street is clean, whether the rubbish bins are emptied. They don't necessarily have to see the workers themselves. Unless they see that the street is not clean, then they would suspect that the worker is absent, and then they would find the worker. In other words, the foremen are just checking whether the streets are clean, but not whether the workers are present. Correct. They are mainly monitoring the service performance, but that would reflect whether the workers are, have been present. Mister Michael Look, then that may be a loophole. Now usually on a, in a football game, eleven aside, when one is out of the game, the other workers, the other players can fill the position for the absent player. That's the same for street cleansing. Another worker can simply cover for the absent worker. That would result in the so-called ghost absence that I mentioned. So I think the Audit Commission should follow up on this. Can a comparison be made between the daily attendance records and the payment slips? Now whenever wages are paid, there must be attendance because for sick leave, the daily wage would be deducted. Only four consecutive days of sick leave would warrant compensation. So you can simply compare the daily attendance records with the payment record. If someone has taken leave, there would be some casual leave record. Daily wages would have been deducted, and then you would know that there has been absence. If the attendance, if the daily attendance records show no absence, then it would constitute the ghost absence scenario that I mentioned. Audit Commission, now according to paragraph four point two five, the FEHD has made such a comparison. So when my team verified those records, no irregularities have been found. So after the public hearing, if you recommend for the actions to be taken by the FEHD and the Audit Commission, we will surely follow up on your suggestions. Mister Donald Ng? Besides the daily attendance records, which we have discussed about, we have also reviewed the actual attendance book kept by the contractors. That would require the workers to sign the name on it. Concerning the payments, payment records, do we simply based our payment decision on the daily attendance records, or actually not? We require a monthly report audited by an independent third party. Now, do the independent auditors compare the attendance records and the attendance book? And the payment record? And when we reimburse the contractors of the day, of the monthly service fees, we require the submission of an audited monthly report. In the auditing process, we believe that the auditors would have made a comparison between the number of workdays and the attendance records. So that's a, that's a factor be- behind our payment decision.
Mister Michael Look? Hong Kong is a very advanced city. Paper-based records are really outdated. We have a lot of non-still workers in Hong Kong, but there is no electronic record-keeping of attendance records. As I know, the housing department has a lot of contract, um, contract, contractors, workers. Over a decade ago, fingerprints and facial recognition were used to record attendance. So there is a very clear record of attendance. We don't need to be over, overly worried. One can't fabricate record when there is a mix of, um, facial recognition as well as fingerprint record. Has the FEHD looked into this situation? Why did you not go digital when it comes to keeping attendance record? Mister Ng?
Thank you. In relation to improvements to different computer systems, we don't start from scratch. We are already working on some computer systems. Say daily inspection records, we are already using electronic record-keeping. We have already started work on going digital. But of course, we'll continue to go digital when it comes to keeping other records. I have already explained our general direction. We definitely implement such measures. We aren't just researching into this area. I might be digressing from the auditor's report. The department has a wide purview, not just street cleansing. We also issued licenses, permits, and so on. We are already wor- working on digitalizing different scopes of services under the FEHD. And it will work harder to enhance the digitalization of the services in relation to street cleansing services. Mister Michael Look?
Mister Ng hasn't yet answered my question. In the past decade, has the department looked into the implementation of digital punch-in system? Have you quoted any price from service providers? You didn't adopt it because of high costs? Or what is the reason behind it? A lot of departments have already implemented. They have a lot of experience for you to draw on. Well, put it this way, or put it bluntly, you can simply copy the practice in use by different departments. Mister Ng, I already touched upon this point, and I believe Mister Michael Look will also go along with me. We aren't just talking about electronic record. We need to provide a one-stop shop. For example, we need to implement a respan system. Right now, we cannot implement this initiative. But when we make enhancements to our system, we'll consider putting in place all these measures in one goal, so that our so that, um, our monitoring services will be more targeted. Mister Michael Look? I asked Mister Ng why you haven't yet conducted this study, but then Mister Ng hasn't yet answered my question. Mister Ng, Director? Well, as I already said, we aren't starting from scratch. We are already implementing to digitalization measures for some scopes of services. Whether we need to fully implement digitalization of services, we need to take into account the computer literacy of frontline staff members. There are close to one, ten thousand frontline staff members working for contractors. We need to take into account their digital literacy. As I mentioned, when we implement this system, we hope to adopt the latest technologies so that be it inspection, attendance record, we want to go digital on all fronts. Mister Michael Look, well, when you can digitalize inspections, it doesn't mean you can digitalize attendance record at the same time. It's actually very simple. You can simply take the fingerprints. I believe even when, even if cleaning workers don't have a high level of education attainment, you can still digitalize all the measures. Absenteeism isn't something new. I will continue to follow up on this aspect. In relation to electronic punching record, do you have any clear timetables, say by the end of this year or by the end of next year? Do you have any clear goal? Mister Ng? As I said, for inspection, for attendance record, I already said that we hope to implement different measures in the coming one and a half years. So there's no clear timeline. I'm disappointed. This section is close to the heart, to, close to the heart of members. Well, even if you cannot give me information today, you can still give me information later on after this meeting. Mister Ng? Yes, point taken. Thank you. Next member, Mister Louis Long.
Thank you Chairman. I have two more questions. Two point two A in the report. The Audit Commission inspected three DEHOs, Yunlong DEHO in twenty twenty-three November, well, um, December and twenty twenty-four September. Yunlong staff members had one percent of in attendance in relation to note thirty-six. In September twenty twenty-four, workmen of well, rather, it should be the shortfall of one percent each in December twenty twenty-three and September twenty twenty-four for Yunlong DEHO. It was attributed to the shortage of in-house workmen, seventeen exactly, nine percent in December twenty twenty-three and twenty-four, that is seven percent in September twenty twenty-four. In relation to the shortfall, has the department sent in-house staff members or contractors, staff members to take up their duties? Was it possible? I mean, was it feasible, Mister Ng?
If a worker is absent from work owing to sickness, for instance, the existing practice is that the duties will be covered by a worker on the adjacent street. We'll avoid having no workers to cleanse the street. So in two point two-two A, purpose two, worker B will cover worker A if worker A cannot, cannot show up for work. We are aware that the duties of a particular worker will be themed out. Even if a worker is absent from work, the workman from other streets will share the duties of the absent workman. In relation to manpower deployment, each DEHO has relief workers. Of course, we cannot keep a large pool of relief workers, but we'll take into account the usual situation of absent workers so that we can make provisional arrangements in relation to absent workers, Mister Lung. In other words, any internal manpower deployment will be made within one single district. If need be, you will send workers from another district to that district to cover the absent worker. Is that correct?
Yes, in general. We take into account the number of inspections and the frequency of inspections. Usually for major districts, the number don't vary much. In relation to foreman and senior foreman, we noticed in the past, we noticed a shortfall or a, quite a high shortfall rate in some districts. But we have already recruited some foreman and senior foreman after we have started recruitment exercises.
Mister Lung, well, I'm glad to see improvements. My next question is related to my previous question. I'd like to ask about two point three-four A. The percentages of in-house street cleansing services varied among nineteen DEHOs. As at the thirtieth of September twenty twenty-four, the percentages ranged from five percent to thirty-seven percent. In particular, street washing services were fully outsourced in three DEHOs. I'd like to ask, Director? On what basis did you decide on the ratio between in-house workers and contractor staff members' workers? Why did you decide to fully outsource the street washing services in some districts or in some DEHOs? Did you do so in order to enhance efficiency? I'd like to hear from the Director. What is your take on it?
Mister Ng? Thank you. Of course, the information in the paper is correct. The percentages of outsourcing street cleansing services varied. We didn't have any indicator in relation to in-house and outsourced street cleansing services within one district. As I mentioned, we consider the ratio eight to two an appropriate one. There are also views about increasing the ratio. Indeed, outsourced street washing services are more flexible. The recruitment exercise will be shorter when it comes to outsourced, outsourced workers. It's longer when it comes to government recu- recruitment exercises. The flexibility among outsourced workers will also be greater. When it comes to keeping a pool of relief workers, in case some staff members cannot turn off for work owing to sickness, the contractors are much more flexible in this regard. We consider the ratio eight to two an appropriate one. Having considered the overall condition of the department, there is no hot and fast requirement, however. Say for the central western district, when the contract has come to an end or after a period of time, do we need to significantly increase the ratio? I believe we don't have to provide hot and fast indicators for all districts. Instead, we need to consider the full picture or the big picture.
Mister Lung, I have heard from the Director. My impression, which may be wrong, is that for some districts, street washing services could be fully outsourced. Does it have anything to do with the provision of services by contractors? Overall, if the supply isn't that great, or when you don't have a lot of supply, would, would that have any bearing on your decision? As you mentioned, the ratio eight to two, in some DEHOs, it's viable, whereas for other DEHOs, it might not be viable. It's not something under your plan. It's rather a consequence as a result of the situation. Otherwise, for the ratio of eight to two, you will adopt this ratio in all districts or in all DEHOs. I want to see whether my understanding is correct. Director?
Thank you Chairman. The ratio of eight to two is a ballpark ratio. Every year, we have a good understanding of what contracts will come to an end. If we need to increase the ratio to nine, when we review different contracts or manpower demand in recruitment exercises in different districts, we will make adjustments if we have a plan. Just now Mister Lung talked about particularly high in some districts. Probably in some certain districts, outsourcing was started earlier on than other districts. That's why these district, districts see a higher ratio. At present, we consider the ratio eight to two quite appropriate. That's why we review service contracts in different DEHOs based on the ratio eight to two. That's how we make suitable adjustments.
Mister Lung? Thank you Chairman. I understand the administration's point. I hope the ratio eight to two is not carved out in stone. I hope you will be flexible and may consider changing the ratio. You may consider increasing the ratio to nine or even to ten. Thank you. I've already asked my questions. Thank you. Miss Yoonis Yong?
Absenteeism or the duties of each workman would be thin out. One percent, that is thirty-one out of three thousand one hundred, were told to work in other districts. In two point two-two A, in Shangshoupo, over half of the work shifts, street washing machines weren't deployed. The administration ascribed these situations to a lack of, um, staff members. So in relation to monitoring of in-house street cleansing services, more improvement and monitoring are needed. The situation when it comes to outsourcing workers seems to be better. Just now, the administration said there's a lack of manpower. There is also a failure of the system. In two point two-six, manual records for the one hundred and fifty daily inspections were maintained but were not put in in the EMS. Eighty percent of the staff members are outsourcing workers, whereas twenty percent of the workers are in-house staff members. You said you have already drawn reference from past experience and have come up with the ratio of eight to two. If in-house staff members' performance isn't quite good, you may have to consider outsourcing more street cleansing services. Or you need to improve the service quality of in-house staff members. Thank you.
Mister Ng? Chairman, allow me to give you some supplementary information. In terms of monitoring, whether we're talking about in-house or outsourced surface, fine inspections. we have uh foreman or senior foreman to do the job. As I said, the number of foremen, well, uh there were times when the uh vacancy rate was a bit high for that rank. We have already improved the situation and we are confident that in terms of uh foremen in December twenty twenty-three, uh the vacancy rate was as high as twenty-six percent. September, the uh twenty twenty-four, it dropped to twelve percent in recent years. Uh the vacancy rate for this rank was only five percent. So we um have um inspections. When we have sufficient manpower, I'm sure we can improve our inspection uh performance and we will in stick to the planned frequency. And if we haven't done inspections as planned, are we aware of that and do we have manpower to do that? As I said, in the past, colleagues might not have stuck to the planned frequency of inspections. By electronic means, now in future, if uh the frequency has dropped, there will be notification to both the colleague concerned and also his supervisor. So that uh we will be able to improve the situation. Ms. Yong is also concerned as to uh whether the uh uh number of um absentees will be better in outsourced contracts than uh in-house service and whether we will enhance the percentage of outsourcing. Now, we truly agree that outsourcing has its merits in terms of flexibility in manpower deployment. But then, in special circumstances, for instance, a certain contractor might have uh collapsed, making it impossible to provide services, we will have to ensure that we have sufficient in-house staff to cover the street cleansing services. I think members do understand that street cleansing is a service needed daily. And we have to take into account all these factors in terms of uh the percentage of outsourcing. Now, I understand that you do face problems in-house, in particular in the deployment of staff. Of course, for outsourcing is much better. They can deploy their manpower across different districts. But take Yunnan as this example, the percentage of uh absentee was twenty-one percent and for uh contract staff, it was only thirteen. So can you have flexibility in manpower deployment? It says that uh for staff in uh Yunnan, they can only serve Yunnan. They cannot be uh deployed to Tiumun. Because if you can be more flexible in manpower deployment, that will reduce the uh percentage of uh absenteeism. And you also have high-tech devices such as a high-speed mechanical street sweepers and uh washing machines. Given that it's not easy to uh fill your vacancies, will you use technology to enhance your quality of service? Thank you. For cross-district deployment, of course, we are not that strict. We are flexible in the deployment of manpower in different districts. We have flexibility in manpower deployment in order to provide the necessary street cleansing and also a washing services. When it comes to the use of technology, now we have a street washing vehicle. Uh we have a very thorough uh cleaning, street cleansing or washing vehicles, as said by the um secretary. We are deploying technology to a large scale. And such devices are very useful because after one thorough cleansing or washing, uh we don't have to uh be that frequent. And so we have uh been using mechanical uh street washing machine in three hundred, three thousand and six hundred beats. We're using different technology. For instance, we are reviewing and testing smaller-scale mechanical street sweepers. And we have also got some uh smaller machines. They are uh they are um multi tier, uh not the multi uh tiara vehicles. And uh sometimes we can also uh use electronic device to reduce uh the need to uh push our costs manually. So the uh application and testing of technology is not just provided by our contractors. We also have our in-house supply. Ms. Yong, uh are there ways to lower the vacancy rate of your staff? Because according to para two point three three, the vacancy is rather high. I'd like to know your recruitment difficulties and are there ways and means to boost the manpower so that you can lower your vacancy rate? Thank you. For workmen too, they are our frontline workers. Indeed, the vacancy rate has been a rather high. They hover around thirteen to fourteen percent. On one hand, we will boost our recruitment efforts. In this regard, our department has done a lot. We take part in different recruitment activities organized by the Labor Department and the Labor Department and uh also the Civil Service Bureau. And we have also reviewed our entry requirements in the past. We require uh three years of work experience in the past seven years. Now, we have already uh lowered that requirement to relevant experience in the past seven years. Of course, our recruitment requirements will not be unreasonable and they have to be relevant and we will through different channels, see how we can recruit more staff to lower our vacancy rate. But I have to stress that the um turnover of our frontline workers is quite high. Contractors uh have a shorter recruitment procedure and so they are superior in this regard. Now, we have been talking about releasing the uh female workforce for um homemakers with children. Well, perhaps they like to work as well. If you can lower the threshold and allow flexi- flexi-hours, for instance, they can uh do part-time, then you may encourage more women to join your workforce. You are using technology, so the uh work is not so labor-intensive. You should make uh your work hours more flexible and if you offer more benefits, perhaps you'll be able to fill your vacancies. And this will help to fill the uh manpower gap in Hong Kong in this regard. Thank you. Noted. Miss Kaminkan. Thank you, Chair. I have got a couple of more questions. Now, in Appendix C, page eighty-six, in para two point one eight, the audit has helped us to review thirty contracts. There were ten contracts with the largest number of default notices involving four contractors, not named here. They are only denoted as A, B, C, D. I wanted the department to provide us with the contract sums of contractors A to J. Uh since uh they uh will, the contractors will be anonymous, I believe you'll be able to give us the contract sum so that I can work out the percentage of deductions. The reason why I ask for this is first, I want to know uh whether using this um deduction of contract sums mechanism is effective on the contractors. Contractors will only comply with your standards if the system is effective. I want to have the denominator. Very often, we've only got the numerator. We know the absolute amount of deductions. Take A as an example. Contractor A has got three contracts. They have together, they they have got three hundred and seventy-five uh default notices and we've only uh deducted hundred and seventy thousand dollars from their contract fees. So is it really effective? Is the consequence serious enough to be effective? So if haven't reviewed this, do let us have the uh figure so that we can give you a hint. Now, the figures here is a Sept- September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I'd like to know the uh period covered. So for para two point eighteen deductions, was it from twenty nineteen to end twenty twenty-four? Five years or we just talk about one year? Mister Ng. Miss Khan. I talked about uh the penalty by way of deduction of monthly fees. Whether that is serving a sufficient deterrent effect, I fully appreciate the point made by Miss Khan. Now, there are a few points. First, whether there is room for further raising the amount of deductions. And a second deterrent effect is whether the contractor can uh be awarded under the contract. We talked about that fifteen demerit point. This will be reviewed. If we do only use uh the deduction of money, monthly fees as a deterrent. Well, I don't think that is sufficient enough because the total contract's sum is quite substantial. And if there are too many default notices received, then the opportunity to bid for another contract will uh be taken away. So we will review the whole um deduction system and also uh the demerit point system under default notices, et cetera, to make our system more effective. What about the period covered? I don't know whether the Audit Commission will be able to answer this question. Please let the director finish first. Miss Khan asked whether there was any street cleansing contractor debad from bidding for street cleansing service contracts because of too many default notices issued. Indeed, there was one from twenty uh twenty to twenty twenty-one. One was barred from bidding for any contractor for one whole year. And then there were two other contractors with the same situation. Audit. Now, uh Miss Khan was referring to the figure for September twenty twenty-four. Do you know the uh period covered in this table? Miss Yivon Ho, uh two to three years. So during two to three years, there were uh such deductions registered. Yes. Then we can decide for ourselves a contract of two to three years. There were three hundred and fifty-seven default notices issued and in total, only six hundred and seventy thousand dollars were deducted. There is room for reviewing this system. You have to adopt a multi-pronged approach. Yes, this is related to uh the possibility of getting another contract, but already said that there is room for reviewing that system that is under para two point one one C. Because if the demerit point system doesn't serve a sufficient deterrent effect, then it's useless. I will pursue this point later. And for uh deduction, well, they will consider six hundred and seventy thousand dollars as part of their operating cost. There isn't sufficient incentive for them to comply with your requirements. So you really should adopt a two-pronged approach. Mister Ng. We have to consider both. On one hand, uh we should look at the amount of deductions vis-à-vis the total contract sum. We will also take reference from the practice of other government departments, whether they are deducting both uh payments as well as uh debarring contractors for further bidding for contracts. So for contractors A, B, C, D, now their contracts have already expired. I'd like to know whether they uh have uh been awarded contracts again according to para one point nine, there are forty-two contracts in force. Mister Ng, uh can I uh ask Miss Khan to repeat her questions? So in Appendix C, we can see that contractors A, B, C, D are involved in thirty-eight contracts already completed and they have been issued with this number of default notices. It appears that contractors A, B, C, D were not that satisfactory in service delivery. So they they were the ten uh street cleansing contracts with largest number of default notices issued and they were involved in uh four, they involve four contractors. I'd like to know whether they have been awarded contracts again. According to para two point one eight, indeed, uh some uh contractors were awarded contracts again uh after they've received, they've received default notices. Three of them were rewarded contracts. This is because the number of street cleansing contractors qualified to bid is not that many in the community. So we have to provide sufficient incentives to ensure the contractors take our default notices seriously. They must understand that default notices come with a consequence. If they have too many such notices, their future chance of getting a contract will be affected. For instance, there can be a progressive system. After they have received a certain number of default notices, there can be a demerit point system to the point that they will be banned from further bidding. So we have to have sufficient incentives so that contractors take such notices seriously. But we have to bear in mind the number of uh qualified contractors in the community. And the threshold for issuing a default notice is not that high. Well, uh even if a worker is not really lazy, but if uh the uniform is not put on properly, a default notice can be issued. The purpose is to ensure our overall standard. Having said so, I'm not saying that default notices um not really are something serious and that contractors shouldn't take them seriously. I'm saying that when considering the total number of default notices, we should also consider these relevant factors. Thank you.
Miss Kaminkan. Next question is about paragraph one point nine. Now, each contract has a period of three years. Now, in the past, the range was from one to three years. Now, why has it become a standard of three years for each contract? Now, the standard period for each contract is three years. That will ensure service certainty. Miss Kaminkan. Now, if the period of each contract is three years, then period of each contract is three years, then it would be too late to assess the performance of the contractor. So there should be a termination mechanism during the validity period. In the past, if the contract period is just one year, then there is still sufficient assessment. If they are three years in length, that would be too long. Director. Now, besides deduction of service fees and also impacts on tender award, there are other mechanisms for reflecting the performance of contractors. Now, in the next review, we are going to consider whether the default notices are carrying sufficient deterrence. Now, this question is for the audit commission. In twenty twenty-three to four, the expenditure is some four point three billion dollars. So where does five point one billion dollars come from? I mean, the expenditure on outsourced service. Professor. Thank you, Chairman. Now, the amount given to us was five point one billion dollars. Now, the further information is provided only today by the FEHD. So the question is better directed at the FEHD. Chairman, if I may. In the previous session, I mentioned the figure five point one billion dollars and how we arrived at that. So allow me to defer to my team. Mister Peter Poon, Assistant Director. Now, according to the director, in twenty twenty-three to four, for streets cleansing, we spent four point three billion dollars on street sweeping. And for five, and for streets cleansing, the expenditure was five point one billion dollars. So the five point one billion dollars include two types of services. First, streets cleansing and second, collection of refuse. That's the total expenditure on the two types of services. Now, for the four point six billion dollar figure, that was solely for streets cleansing. I think we need some supplement figures after the meeting. It is not clear. I was talking about year twenty twenty-three to four. That's the period covered by the audit director of all this report. Five point one billion dollars and four point two three billion dollars. Now, what's mentioned by Mister Poon was the twenty, was the figure for twenty twenty-four to five. I would rather have the written supplement, supplements after the meeting. That's all right. Next, Mister Michael Look. I'll continue my line of questioning about default notice and written warning. Now, table two, there is a, there are some figures. Now, when there is a default notice, money will be deducted. So what kind of defaults would be, would qualify a default notice and what qualifies a written warning? And about the demerit system. Now, for the demerit point system, has the administration conducted a study on the applicable scope of demerit points? Only three contractors had one point deducted. I'm not saying that we should hand out demerit points arbitrarily, but the number is simply too low over the years. I am not sure about the deterrence of the demerit point system. Now, there are issues about payments of salary and also statutory leaves and wages and heat stroke. Now, what about those O S H contraventions which may cause injuries or even fatality? These are not included on the demerit point system. Director. On the second question about the applicable scope of the demerit point system. The system is not designed by the FEHD itself. There is an intra-governmental, there is an, there is an internal system to deduct points from contractors designed by the government. Now, on what scenarios warrant a default notice or a written warning? Now, for service-related defaults, for example, accumulation of refuse on the streets or dirty pavements, default notices would be issued. In terms of written warning in relation to service during inspection, when there are suspected absence from shifts, after verbal warning is given. After the workers have reported to duty, we will still issue a written warning for serious defaults. Default notices would be issued, for example, disposing of refuse inappropriately or falsifying attendance record. These are severe default warranting default notices. For employment-related matters like working hours and salary, default notices would also be issued. So these are some examples on the situations warranting default notices and written warning. Mister Michael Look. There is a number for default notices issued, but still very few contractors had points deducted. There have been some complaints and disputes. Now, since the improvements, enhancements of the outsourcing system in twenty nineteen, forty-three complaints have been received in relation to statutory leaves and termination of contracts and so on. Now, sometimes the employers would claim that it is a, it is an honest mistake and check the responsibility. It really riles me up during the COVID period. Cleaning workers reported to duty despite of the risk of contracting the disease. Now, when the pandemic was at its height, the government advised COVID patients to just stay home and rest. So there were a lot of absentees. So the FEHD gave a, gave a gave discretion to contractors and did not deduct service fees, even when there were absence from shifts. Now, there was a time when sick leave allowances were paid even without a sick leave certificate. So according to the L W B and the Labor Department, if even without a sick leave certificate, if the employers trust the employees, then they should still pay the, pay the sick employee. Now, there are some contractors who deducted sick leave payments from the worker, but did not have the service fee deducted by the FEHD. So we had several meetings. The employer had a very poor attitude. The employer basically said that if there was a complaint, we would reimburse you. In the end, two workers were fired. That's Backwell Green Group. Now, the employer was unscrupulous, but there was no way to hold them accountable. So I wonder if the director has any impression or recollection about the case. Mister Michael Look. I think the case you mentioned was not one of the contractors mentioned in the report. I know, but under the existing mechanism, can anything be done concerning unscrupulous employers like this? For example, demerit points or withholding service fees. Now, we attach lots of importance to whether the employers have violated the employment ordinance. Now, if there are cases of contravention of contractual terms or the employment ordinance, we will definitely follow up the matter. Now, besides default notices, for employment-related matters, we would definitely issue demerit points. So we would not let any unscrupulous employers slide. Concerning specific examples given by Mister Michael Look, we would look into the matter. For past cases, if evidence can be provided, we will also conduct investigation. Let me give you another example. Upon receipt of complaints. For example, the FEHD has received forty-three complaints about rest days, M P F contribution and termination of contracts. So these are past cases reviewed in a question. Now, for this, for this kind of complaints, if the employers immediately rectify the mistake, will there be consequences like demerit points? Mister Look, let's try to focus on the matter that is at hand, that is valuable money audits in the report. I know you are very riled up about some cases, but I think the administration has done its best to answer you. Director. I think Mister Look's concern is whether the employers would be would, the employers don't have to bear any consequences after a verbal apology. That's not the case. Now, to ensure contractors are fulfilling their responsibilities under the employment ordinance, we have a regular mechanism. Of course, there is room for improvement. However, we do conduct inspections concerning the fulfillment of contractual terms. And we also conduct in-person interviews with frontline workers to ensure that they have been paid in full. So we are very concerned whether employers are fulfilling the obligations. No further questions, so concerning parts one and two, any further questions? Mister Michael Look, let's move on to parts three and part four. So my first question is according to paragraph three point ten of the report, table six, between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four, the employment, the establishments of D E Ts has been enlarged, however, the number of default notices issued has decreased. Does it mean that the effectiveness in dealing with hygiene black spots has declined? Of course, it may mean that the situation has improved. So does it mean that the D E Ts are not working hard enough or is it difficult to prosecute cases? There are some refuse disposal black spots remaining. So how can we enhance the enforcement effectiveness of the D E Ts? That is in relation to value, to valuable money audit. Is they, is there an index? Performance index for enforcement and how can we assess the effectiveness of the enforcement actions? Director. Now, the D E Ts are actually working very efficiently. Thus, the total number of black spots, according to table seven, the number of black spots eliminated or markedly improved, the number has increased significantly. As I mentioned in the previous session, with the leadership of the Deputy Chief Secretary, the number of black spots has decreased by seventy percent from twenty ninety-six to two hundred and forty-six. Now, concerning the number of fixed penalty notice issued, the number has dropped. That does not necessarily means that the D E Ts are slacking. On the contrary, in October twenty twenty-three, we have significantly increased the penalty level for environmental hygiene offenses. So that has helped as well in terms of compliance. Now, if the number of F P Ns continue to drop or if the number of black spots continue to drop, we will reconsider our existing establishments. There are two hundred and eleven colleagues in our D E Ts. Do we need to maintain the existing level of manpower? We will reconsider it. Mister Look. Now, about the deployment of I P cameras, paragraph three point thirteen. No documents show that the FEHD has regularly checked the deployment of I P cameras. There is no record on the conditions for deployment of I P cameras. Now, there are forty-nine black spots, eighty percent of them are not included in the situation reports for follow-up by D E Ts. Now, I think all locations installed with I P cameras are hygiene black spots. But why are they not included in the situation reports for D E Ts to follow up? For A's locations, over the span of three months, a thousand one hundred and seventy unlawful disposal of refuse were recorded. But some of these locations were not issued with fixed penalty notices or default, or default notices. So despite the record, no punishment has been handed down. So that defeats the purpose. Is it because of lack of manpower or is it because of a divorce between the contraventions recorded and penalty issued? It seems that the cameras are going to waste. Director. Now, Mister Michael Look inquired whether I P cameras are installed at black spots. Now, when there are complaints, we would usually install I P cameras. So the I, the I P cameras would be installed at locations covered by D E Ts. Now, for the top five locations receiving complaints, only twenty percent of them are cut, are included in the situation reports of D E Ts. So for the top five black, black spots, not all of them are suitable for the work of D E Ts. For example, some complaints are in relation to hawking that is not related to D E Ts. Concerning I P cameras, are the locations fixed? Or does the number remain the same? That's not the case. It depends on the individual black spots. Every three, every three months, the DEHOs will have to re-review the locations of the IP cameras. In twenty twenty-four, we have added or moved twenty IP cameras. It shows that the FEHD has been proactively reviewing whether IP cameras are warranted for a certain location.
Members also mentioned a lack of prosecution figures provided in the report. Some IP cameras have zero prosecution figures. Why do we still keep them? Every time we move the location of the IP cameras, we not just, we don't just take into account prosecution figures. We also consider recurrence possibilities. We've heard from district councillors as well as frontline staff members. For black spots of illegal disposal of refuse, if there is no IP camera for deterrence effect, there is a high likelihood of recurrence. That's why in some spots, the prosecution, prosecution figures of some IP cameras aren't high. Mr. Michael Look, I'd like to ask about three point five FEHD guidelines. The FEHD are responsible for handling aging cases. The FEHD needs to identify these cases as soon as possible. In three point eight, the Audit Commission visited three DEHOs. As at October twenty twenty-four, a total of thirty-seven cases ranging from one point seven five years to three point five years. In other words, the problem hasn't been solved after three point six years. This situation is far from ideal. Do you have any plans to improve your operation? Thank you. In relation to aging cases, of course, we don't want to see this happening in Hong Kong. But from the perspective of macro figures, two hundred and forty-six hygiene black spots, a reduction of seventy percent achieved by us. Regarding some black spots, indeed, I believe we won't be able to iron all these problems just by way of prosecution or law enforcement actions. Manpower deployment, efficiency, all these are factors at play. Regarding different black spots and manpower deployment, we will conduct reviews. We will also work on operational efficiency. In addition, we will also work on public education. The aim is to reduce the number of black spots in Hong Kong. From the perspective of legal, of law enforcement actions, I understand we need to cover more black spots in the areas that the DET will conduct inspections in. Thank you. Next, Mr. Emmon Wong. I'd like to ask about three point six brackets A two. As for Shamsheipo DEHO, why only two locations in Shamsheipo? Have you looked into the situation? What is the reason behind it? Mr. Ng, thank you. In Shamsheipo DEHO, the DET only covered two locations. But actually, the two locations covered public markets. A total of nineteen streets in these two locations comparing with the Eastern District or Yunlong District. The spots may be actually smaller, so the overall coverage is similar. We consider this reporting method not the most ideal. This may give the public the impression that we only inspect two locations. Therefore, we will review the relevant guidelines. For the spots that need to be covered by DET, we may use a street as a unit instead of a location or a district. Thank you, Mr. Emmon Wong. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Ng, for your clarification about my question. In the Eastern District, twenty to twenty-three, Yunlong, fifty-six to sixty-one. If I simply look at the report, it's not fair to the colleagues working in the Shamsheipo area. The coverage and the streets cover are not comparable. Well, I mean, they are comparable to the other areas. We do need to align the reporting method. Regarding the daily work of the DETs, it seems the plan hasn't been updated for long. It hasn't been updated for one point six years. Is there any timetable of review of your work or of your work programs? Thank you. In relation to the review of the scope of DETs, we do have a requirement in place. The DEHOs need to conduct reviews every two months. And the findings of a report need to be submitted to the headquarters of the FEHD. In Shamsheipo, only two locations, that is, the two public markets in the locality. We keep these two public markets on the list. The reason is that we consider these, um, locations suitable. That is because there is a high volume of traffic in this area. A lot of people walk past that area, hence they need to take law enforcement actions. Thank you, Mr. Emmon Wong. I'd like to ask about three point six, A bracket three. Right. Six locations, eleven percent were planned for inspection by two different teams on the same day under the same work shift for handling the same targeted type of offense, for example, littering of bag refuse. The FEHD replied that the area covered is actually very large. I'd like to ask about the six locations. Where were they? Why, why did you need such a large team? Mr. Ng, we've looked into the situation in Yunlong. Regarding the work program of Yunlong, the coverage is actually very large. It's not just about one location. Yunlong Honing Road, Yunlong Nola, Yunlong Education Road. All these are full of pedestrians. That's why we consider necessary to send to DET to Yunlong, Seikau Yook Road, Yunlong Nola, and so on. Mr. Emmon Wong, well, I'm concerned if there is any duplication of duties in relation to work programs, say where DETs need to visit to take actions as well as to work reports. Just now, we talked about the size of different locations, and we are going to issue more guidelines. In relation to the format of work reports, as well as the details to be included in work reports, we are, we are already working on the enhanced version of the report. We need to demarcate the area more clearly. We also need to set out the completion time of the work program or the action. Colleagues are requested to remark whether they have issued any default notices and the completion time of the inspections. Whatever happens during the inspections, our colleagues will have to make a report in the work report. I'd like to ask about three point six B. The Audit Commission found, um, different formats in the work report. Some use Excel, some use emails. We fail to see the efficiency or the effectiveness. This also makes it difficult for the management to review the effectiveness. Do you have any plan to improve this situation? Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Ng, yes. A simple answer to Mr. Emmon Wong's question is that we will. In relation to districts, colleagues have more flexibility to decide on the scope of service. We want to be more consistent in the Audit Commission's report. When it comes to the contents of the report and the format of the report, we want to improve consistency so that the public will be able to access more information. Thank you, Mr. Emmon Wong. I'd like to go to three point one O. It's about DET dedicated enforcement teams. Regarding fixed penalty notices in twenty twenty, each DET member issued one hundred and five, twenty twenty-one, one hundred and thirty-six, twenty twenty-four, ninety-six. Of course, the number of DET members varied between these years, among these years. In twenty twenty, only sixteen thousand fixed penalty notices. Well, I understand as we were in the middle of pandemic, we didn't go out as much. In twenty twenty-one, twenty-four thousand, twenty twenty-four, twenty thousand. My first question is that did you have any, do you have any breakdown of the fixed penalty notices in different districts? Any districts saw particularly high numbers of fixed penalty notices? Mr. Ng, we have already considered the size of different districts. In the process, we'll review the number of fixed penalty notices, FPNs. However, from a more macro perspective, the number of FM, FPNs saw a decrease. That may be due to better law-abiding awareness among the public. They no, no longer litter as much as they did. The number of DETs did vary. In addition to FPNs, fixed penalty notices, as I mentioned, hygiene black spots, agent cases, we take these into account. We will also consider streamlining our, our structures. Remember, just now referred to particular districts. Will some districts require fewer DETs in light of fewer FPNs issued? Is it possible to reduce the number of DETs in some districts? Not least those with a smaller number of FPNs. We will take this into account. We will look into the situation. At present, one plus four, that makes up a team. Do we still need to keep this number of team members? Is it possible to reduce the number of team members? We will consider this in one go. Thank you, Mr. Emmon Wong. Thank you. I'd like to go back to three point eight, A two. Well, regarding some formats of reports, I'd like to ask about the differences, Mr. Ng, in the new format of the report. We have requested colleague to provide more information. Say, we need to pay regard to the five areas with the highest number of complaints. The old format was used by DETs, but then the presentation was actually clear. It's about the problem of obsolete form used by DETs. It is not ideal. We have already reminded colleagues to use the new format or the new situation reports. I believe this doesn't affect much inspections. Mr. Emmon Wong, how much longer did you continue to use the old, old version of the form before the Audit Commission reminded you? Well, I don't have any specific figures at hand. But I'd like to say the, um, the, um, exclusion of the top five hotspots was the only thing having been missed out. Regarding your, another question I'd like to ask my colleague, Mr. Yu, to give you more information. The version of the form was updated in twenty twenty-one, so we requested different districts to use the new version of the form in twenty twenty-two. But as the director mentioned, there is no direct impact on the situation irrespective of the use of the old version of the form. Mr. Wong, the administration said that there won't be a significant impact. But I believe the change was made just because you were free. I believe there must be some reasons for which you changed the form or the version of the form. I'd like to point out, this may lead to another problem. In other words, is there any lack of monitoring of your colleagues? This may lead to a communication break. That is exactly what I want to point out. There may be standing practice, there may be guidelines, but still, your colleagues need to follow the rules. In any event, we need to rely on these mechanisms to monitor colleagues. In case of any problems, it's not ideal when the director said your colleagues had deviated from the guidelines. The Audit Commission has noticed some hotspots weren't included in the report. The reasons weren't set out in the report either. For some hotspots, they weren't included in your situation reports. What are the factors at play? How many of these factors are human factors? How many of these are objective factors? Mr. Ng, thank you. Using complaint hotspots as an example, regarding the top five hotspots that have been included in the reports, twenty percent of these have been included in the report. In other words, eighty percent weren't included in the report. The majority of these hotspots consisted of, um, areas that the DET isn't responsible for. In other words, some are in relation to unlawful shopfront extension or hawkers. There's no cor, direct correlation between these, this type of duties is, and, um, and what is, um, in charge and what is um in charge of, by the DETs.
Chair, may I ask my last question concerning three point two six to two point, uh, three point two seven? Now, uh, those who have um come repeatedly, um, a repeat offenders can be easier to have summonses and it is said that they haven't, some of them have been, been issued summonses because there was no evidence whether they were repeated offenders and they could only check while the, they were back in office. So, uh, how can we um ensure that repeated offenders will not repeat the same offenses again and again? Now, our current practices for repeated offenders, we will easy them with summonses. Our thinking was prosecution actions by way of summonses will mean more serious consequences for repeated offenders. But we have heard comments that whether summonses can be that effective on repeated offenders rather because of a change in the level of fine under FPNs than for repeated offenders. Perhaps uh FPNs are more effective in deterring repeated offenders. So if I may refer to table nine, uh, for item B littering. Three to forty-one FPNs, very often they involve a feeding of uh pigeons illegally. So we believe it is better to raise the level of FPNs than to prosecute them with summons. Perhaps I did not ask my question properly. According to the FHD's guideline, uh, they should use FPNs or rather they should use prosecution by way of summons rather than FPNs. I am a layman in this regard. I don't know whether this is a good approach and it's also your professional judgment and audit could only uh say whether you have followed your guidelines. So audit is asking why you haven't followed your own guidelines, i.e. to issue summons. Now, you just told us that a higher level of fine under FPNs may serve a greater deterrent effect. Then it will be something for you to ask for legal's approval. Our question is how come you have deviated from your own guidelines? I'd like to know the reason for your deviation from your guidelines. I'm not discussing whether uh this is a more effective way. Mister Ng, now, if we expect our staff members to remember on sight whether the um offender in front of him is a repeated offender is a bit challenging. Because uh, under our current guidelines for repeated offenders, we should take prosecution action by way of summons. In fact, uh, some of our colleagues can uh do know whether uh a person is a repeated offender. But uh, there may be fresh repeated offenders. So if we rely on our colleagues to remember a repeated offenders, a phases, this is a bit difficult. And that's why I'm saying that using FPNs may even be more effective even to repeated offenders so that our colleagues do not have to remember whether the person in front of him is a repeated offender. Now, when the guidelines were devised, I believe you had consulted your frontline enforcement officers. There was already the problem where on recognizing repeated offenders. So you shouldn't establish guidelines that cannot be followed. So I'd like to know when the guidelines were first devised, how could you enable your enforcement officers to know the phases of repeated offenders? Now, as I said, if uh it is really someone who has uh repeated offenses a number of times, there is a pattern to spot. For instance, feeding of feral pigeons, uh, people know who are the repeated offenders. We decided to use summons because back then it was a bit different. Now, the fines under FPNs are much higher and so we are thinking of a new way and uh we have to review whether it is really more effective to prosecute by way of summons or to issue FPS. Perhaps you can ask your frontline staff to call someone at headquarters to confirm whether someone is a repeated offender. Can that be done? Indeed, in the second stage of a review of our environmental hygiene related fines, we consider whether um FPNs is more effective than prosecution actions by way of summons. Now, we ought to develop a system that can recognize the face of a repeated offender. It's going to be costly. And then each conviction may have different circumstances. A person uh might uh have been convicted in the past, he might have received an FPN and objected and uh he might have defaulted a payment under an FPN. So there can be different circumstances. So back then, we uh could then have a, have an operation and just to to catch someone who is a repeated offender in feeding feral pigeons. And if we and we uh felt that it was challenging and costly to develop a system to recognize phases of repeated offenders. And then it was also decided to raise the level of fines under FPNs and we are now reviewing which one is the best way in deterring repeated offenders. Mister Emin Wong, I have no further questions now. Colleagues, it's now six eighteen PM. Was supposed to end at six thirty PM. We've only got Mister Liu's lung waiting to ask questions. I'd like to ask whether colleagues have questions to ask. All right, Miss Kaminkan has just raised her hand. I believe we won't be able to complete the agenda even if we extend the meeting. That being the case, I think we should call it a date now. So we have almost completed. Today's open hearing is now six nineteen PM. The next hearing will be held on the third of June. It's actually next Tuesday from nine AM. We will uh compete what's left today. And some members asked for supplementary information. I hope such information will be available before next Tuesday. Any supplement? If not, thank you very much for your attendance. Thank you.